We got a visit from everybody from home tonight. The Bayou is well-referenced tonight.
Okay.
There ain't no fish running there.
No, we're gonna have a celebration of fish fry later.
Okay, to be announced. Let us all stand. We're gonna ask Mr. Stringfellow if he would lead us in prayer and then the prayers are believed.
My heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to meet tonight. We also thank you for the many blessings that you have bestowed upon our school system and our teachers and parents and our superintendent and all of our students. We ask you to guide our teachers and administrators in these last few days of school as we prepare for our next school year, and we need all thy wisdom and guidance as we go about doing these things. We also ask for thy guidance and protection for our first responders, the policemen, the firemen, all of the emergency people, and also protect our soldiers that are in harm's way across different parts of this world. Also, we ask for thy wisdom and guidance for our leaders as they make big decisions that affect all of us. These things we pray in thy name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the water of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah.
Hey, we need to appear here every time. Ms. Pete, can I say something before we start? Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure that we didn't have any bows and arrows that were... That's the first thing I asked, you know, because these guys never miss the target, undoubtedly.
They never miss the target, and like I said, it's nice to have so many people from my area here tonight, and believe it or not, I was just told that I have a great-grandchild in the group, so, you know, I'm still amazed, a great-grandchild, but that's wonderful. So, great, but lots of good folks there, and, you know, even a cousin I share a birthday with, so it's nice to have friends to visit with tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate your allow me that. I was glad to know that Ms. Pete has all her group with her tonight. Got her back.
And so, they need to be really good to me tonight, don't they? There you go. They got the bows and arrows.
That's too random, Middles. Dr. Foster, you have anything in announcements?
I do not.
Okay. Mr. Battles?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hallway?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We have the approval of the minutes from the previous meeting?
So moved.
Get a second. Moving proper second, we approve the minutes from the previous meeting in unreadiness. All in favor by sign of aye?
Aye.
Pose of motion carried. Need a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Moving proper second, we adopt agenda in unreadiness. All in favor by sign of aye?
Aye.
Pose of motion carried. Ms. Pete, do you have an announcements?
I don't have any announcements, but I would like to ask one change in the agenda that before we do the reports and recognition, we have the state examiner here tonight, and I'd like to ask that he be able to give that report before we go into the rest of the meeting, as, you know, he needs to travel.
Yes, sir. Come on.
Good evening, board. I appreciate the spot on the agenda tonight to come and present your audit as we always do in accordance with the School Fiscal Accountability Act. This will be for the time period October 1st, 2015 through September 30th, 2016. You can view the report in its entirety on our website at wwwexaminersAlabama.gov, and it was published on May the 5th of 2017. The audit was conducted in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards and government auditing standards for the purposes of rendering an opinion on the financial statements and determine whether the board complied with applicable laws and regulations. We also conducted an audit of the board's federal programs in accordance with provisions of the Uniform Administrative Requirements, Cost Principles, and Audit Requirements for Federal Awards, which is known as the Uniform Guidance. We issued an unmodified opinion on the board's financial statements for the period ended September 30th, 2016. This means that the financial statements are presented fairly in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. We also noted no matters to indicate that the board had not complied in all material respects with applicable laws and regulations. In addition, we issued an unmodified opinion on the board's major federal program, which for this year, we tested the Title I Grants to local educational agencies. We did, however, note a couple of matters that are included in many audit as findings. The first one states the Mobile County Board of School Commissioners Local School Accounting Department requires ticket sales reports for athletic events to be filled out properly and reconciled to the deposits being made for the ticket sales. Also, personnel working at athletic events should be paid through the board's payroll system at an hourly rate based on the approved schedule. School personnel working at basketball events were paid from the monies collected at events at Murphy High School, which resulted in those ticket sales reports not being filled out correctly and not reconciled to the deposits made for the ticket sales. The last one is the local school accounting department also requires certain receiving procedures to be followed by all the local school personnel. All funds collected and received by the teacher should be turned in to the school's office on a daily basis and should be deposited daily by office personnel. Teachers did not always turn in funds collected from the students to the office in a timely manner at Dixon Elementary and Murphy High School, and personnel did not make daily deposits always at Mary B. Austin Elementary and Dixon Elementary. We included recommendations in the report to correct those findings, and as well, a corrective action plan was prepared and submitted to us by the superintendent. It's also included in our audit report as exhibit number 17. That's all I have. I would like to say in closing, as always, we appreciate the cooperation of the board and all the personnel at the central office at the local schools. They're always very helpful, very cooperative in the audit process, and we appreciate that. So, thank you.
Thank you for your time, and we wish you safe travel back home.
Thank you.
Okay. At this time, we have reports and recognition.
Now you get to see why the big crowd is here. I'd like to call forward the Dixon Elementary School Archery Team and Coaches Fay Huesong, Bill Huesong, Rebecca Dickens, and Coach Joshua Clark cannot be here tonight, as well as Principal Glenda Warren and Board Member Dr. Bill Foster. I think we have 31 of the students here tonight.
Wow.
You can hear their medals clanking.
Yeah.
Medals clanking.
Wow, look at that.
In only its third year of existence, the Dixon Elementary School Archery Team has qualified for the National Archery in Schools World Tournament, which will be held in July in Orlando, Florida. The road to the World Tournament began with the team being named South Alabama Regional Champions. The team went on to the NASP National Championship in Louisville earlier this month, placing seventh out of 180 elementary schools from across the country.
Wow.
Dixon's Colby Lewis, are you here? There he is. He placed 15th individually in the Elementary Boys Division, and 13 members of the team also qualified as academic archers... Raise your hand if that's one of you... For making all As and Bs. Congratulations. Now, Coach Huesong is going to introduce the team, and we have certificates that Dr. Foster can give to the coaches, and then the students, she's gonna give them a certificate out in the hallway. But here you go.
We'd like to welcome our team as future world champions. We've got high hopes, but I think you'd be really interested in knowing just how young some of these students are, so I'm gonna ask them to say their own name and tell us what grade they're in, so you can see the various groups that we have here. We're gonna start with Coach Dickens on Ian, with Ian Crosswhite. You just stay right there. Really loud, tell him your name real quick and what grade.
Ian Crosswhite, fourth grade. Holiday, fifth grade. Chris, sixth grade. Andrew, third grade. Chris, fourth grade. Allie, ninth grade. Yeah, Matt, fifth grade. Phil, eighth grade. Colby Lewis, fifth grade. Ken, sixth grade. Then Steve, fifth grade. Andrew, hot, third grade. Love, eighth grade. I'm Julie, fifth grade. Ian, step forward.
Mario, Colby, Mia, Lily. These students were actually filmed today on WKRD, and that's gonna be aired June 2nd at 6 o'clock, so they were at the Bayou for about an hour and a half, and they're getting some really good publicity for our program, so we really appreciate the board taking the time and recognizing our student and all of our parents for coming out and supporting our team. Thank you.
What's the trophies for?
Oh, I'm sorry, Coach Huesong.
This trophy here is the first place in the regional trophy, South Carolina High School. This is the second place trophy of Bay of Alabama, the elementary division.
There you go.
Hold up, Dr. Foster. Hold up, hold up. Take your time.
I don't know if we have a lot of camera.
On behalf of the Board of School Commissioners, it's with great pleasure that I present the certificate, or these certificates of recognition to the following people, and these are the coaches Fay Huesong, Bill Huesong, Rebecca Dickens, and Joshua Clark, and we want you to know that we're very proud of the Dixon Elementary Archery Team, who are the South Alabama Regional Champs, and this is signed by each of the board members and our superintendent, Ms. Pete, and it is a particular... It gives me a particular pleasure to award this to Dixon School, a school that represents where I came from. I'm a Bayou person, born and raised, born in the Bayou and raised in the Bayou, and I'm certainly proud of each and every one of you, as I am all of my schools, but in particular, tonight, we're recognizing Dixon Elementary. Certainly proud of you, your principal, all the staff there, parents who have supported you. Congratulations to you, and you're a wonderful group.
Dr. Foster, will you all bunch up over here for a quick... Well, for a picture? Yep. This is a big crowd.
Dr. Crenshaw, you were asking about fish and seafood. Tuesday night, this group will be the waiters and waitresses at the lighthouse on Tenth and Switch Road. They're going to be working with their partner in Education Lighthouse to earn money to go to the national championship.
Okay.
World championship, excuse me.
Is there a possibility that Dr. Foster and Ms. Pete would be there?
It's on my schedule.
Ms. Pete, what is it about archery in the south part of the county, because we always seem to have schools winning that down there?
We aim well and shoot...
Okay.
And shoot straight. That's right. Thank you, Coach Huesong. We aim well and shoot straight.
That's pretty good. I like that.
Thank you.
Remember Alba did so well one year?
They did.
And, golly.
They've had world champions.
Yeah, remember Alba? It kind of started with them, like, yeah.
Like I said, we aim straight, we aim well and shoot straight.
Pretty good.
And now while they're taking the picture, I'd like to call forward our Bryant-Jordan athletes, Clary Kengee... Did I say that right? Okay. From Davidson High School, and Board Member Mr. Don Stringfellow, and Emma Biridan from Murphy High School, and Mr. Robert Battles. Our next recognition are for two graduates of the class of 2017 who received Bryant-Jordan scholarships. These scholarships are awarded statewide to students who excel academically and athletically or who have overcome personal hardship. Davidson's Clary Kengee immigrated to the United States 10 years ago from Tanzania, where wars and violence had made it difficult for him to live safely and get an education. Kengee spoke five languages, but he had to learn English when he got here. He quickly learned our language and carried a 3.7 GPA, made the A.B. Honor Roll, and was a member of the National Honor Society. He helped Davidson's soccer team finish as the 7A State Runners-Up. His next step is to play soccer at William Carey University in Hattiesburg, Mississippi. And then Emma Biridan graduated fifth in her class from Murphy High School and was captain of the Panthers soccer team. She was on the All-A Honor Roll throughout her four years in Murphy's IB Program. She made a 33 on her ACT and graduated with a 4.9 GPA. She and a classmate also started Panther Pals, a club that provides mentors for special education students. She plans to attend the University of Alabama. Congratulations.
This certificate is presented on behalf of the Board of School Commissioners of Mobile County, a certificate of recognition awarded to Ms. Emma Biridan for the Bryant-Jordan Scholarship. We wish you much success, and, you know, beside being an athlete, being a scholar is something that's pretty rare, so if you fail or break your leg on the athletic, you have a good thing in the background also. We just want to wish you all the luck in the world, you know. Come on, say it. Say something.
Thank you. Feels great to be recognized.
Thank you, man.
Before I read this, I want you to know how close Davidson High School came to winning the state championship. I had to clarify this issue for you, but they lost in a few events, the state champion over the mountain time, is that correct? And a, if you guys know about soccer, they had a kickoff. They went two overtimes, and they lost. How close were they, Pennington? Really close. These guys could have been state champions, and to have players and student athletes who came is quite an accomplishment, and like Mr. Battles said, is also quite an accomplishment to be the student that he is and what he's overcome, to get to be where he is. And I'm extremely proud of the principal and the classmates and the board and the superintendent that are proud of what you did. Now, I want to award you this certificate of recognition, award to Clary Kengee, the Bryant-Jordan Scholarship, and I wish you the best, and as well, besides all the board members and the superintendent, I wish you the best of what you've accomplished. Congratulations.
Is your mom here tonight?
The night, there at work. I would like to thank everybody for everything they did for us, you know. I would like to thank the school board for giving us a great education and everything that I could possibly need to be successful. Thank you.
Thank you.
And if I... Mr. Stringfellow, if I remember seeing in the paper, he and two of his fellow teammates are going to college together, right? Yes, great.
By the way, I thought that you had the best looking uniform on.
Thank you. All right, and now I would like to call forward Lieutenant Colonel Frank Barrow to introduce our next guest and Dr. Reginald Crenshaw.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here, CD. If you're not excited, if you work for the school system and you're not excited after seeing those little kids and these athletes get these types of awards, this is what it's all about. Here we are at the end of school year, and how are students kind of tired? They're coming here tonight with the opportunity to see the board members, to see these youngsters. We know that our future is so bright here in Mobile County, so that'd be part of it. We have, last year at one high school, two instructors left us, and bringing in two JROTC instructors, both of whom are combat veterans, to... Into a school system with zero experiences of challenge for anybody, because ROTC is a full-time, difficult job. At the end of the school term, these two young men saw an altercation take place on campus and intervened, and resulted in two young people not having a major issue. But those of us that know all the facts behind that, it was... It could have been quite different. And we're very excited to introduce this evening, beginning with the senior Army Instructor, Lieutenant Colonel Robbie Cross. Come on up, Robbie. And the real hero of the day, Chief Warrant Officer III, Adam Bryant. And Adam is a graduate of Alba High School, so we are very proud of these two individuals, and you'll know why here in just a moment. Dr. Crenshaw, you'll take a lot of pride in this opportunity. Thank you.
The Mobile County Board of School Commissioners would like to express gratitude to Chief Warrant Officer III, Adam Bryant, and Lieutenant Colonel Robbie Cross. The heroic actions of these two Army JROTC instructors at Blunt High School helped ensure the safety of our students during a May 9th altercation at the school. The two JROTC instructors acted quickly during the situation to prevent it from escalating. The school board appreciates these men for going above and beyond the call of duty and for keeping the safety and security of our students at the forefront. Thank you.
The principal at the school shared with me the video of that situation, and surely if you all had not intervened, we would have probably been on national news. It was really a touch and go situation, but your act of heroism, your being heroic in terms of stepping in there, doing what needed to be done, was really commendable. We need men like you in the system, not just at Blunt High School, but throughout the system. For your courage and your ability to react in a very positive way, preventing a very serious situation, we'd like to present to you a certificate of recognition awarded to CW3 Adam Bryant. Quick action is assuring safety of our students. Signed by Ms. Martha P., Superintendent and the board member. Congratulations, Mr. Bryant. And the same certificate submitted to, assumed Lieutenant Colonel, am I correct? Okay, Lieutenant Colonel Robbie Cross. Quick action is ensuring safety of our students. And again, I just cannot stress the importance of what you all did, and I will step a little further and say you probably saved a life that day, because it would have been terrible. So again, congratulations and best wishes.
Dr. Crenshaw, Ms. Pete, and board members, if you didn't know this, I was Lieutenant Colonel when Robbie Cross was a young captain. Now I know I'm getting a little long too, so I'm very excited to be part of our team. Thank you so much.
And for our final recognition, I would like to call forward Dr. Amanda Jones, and I believe she has a few of her teachers here from Mary B. Austin Elementary School. And Dr. Crenshaw should have had you stay up here. Each year, the Alabama Department of Education recognizes three teachers, one principal, one technology coordinator, and one superintendent with the Chiquita Marbury Technology Innovation Awards. I'm proud to announce that Dr. Amanda Jones, principal of Mary B. Austin Elementary, received this honor for 2017. During her four years at Mary B. Austin, Dr. Jones has refocused the school toward innovation through the four Cs: critical thinking, collaboration, communication, and creativity. Her students, known as Austin Innovators, participate in communication labs and technology labs and incorporate technology into their project-based learning. As early as kindergarten, they're learning coding and 3D design and printing. Dr. Jones will be recognized for these innovations during a statewide ceremony in June in Hoover. Congratulations.
Dr. Jones, on behalf of the superintendent and the board, we'd like to present you with the certificate of recognition awarded to Dr. Amanda Jones, Chiquita Marbury Technology Innovation Award, signed by Ms. Martha Pete and also the board members. Will you tell us a little bit about the award?
Thank you. This is a great honor. It was a state award, and it's primarily for innovations, and I'm very honored to accept it, but I really have to accept it on behalf of my teachers, because, you know, I may have lots... I have ideas, but they're the ones who execute those ideas. So that's why I'm proud to have Ms. Amanda Delaney and Mary Alice Poulier here to... They're really the ones who deserve this recognition, so on behalf of my staff, I accept this.
Can we take one for you?
I always forget to...
Smile here first. Smiley.
Before we go to request a speak before the board, we have a seasoned veteran here, and we're glad to see her. Your school is coming along pretty well. I know you've been checking on it. They told me, I saw you riding by there, but... 20 times. Ms. Hazel Fournier is here with us. Who spent over, I'm not gonna say it, years in the system, so we're glad to have you.
I've been there 57 years, with Dad, so my 57 years of experience in the local school system.
All right.
So, the time back, bringing in you and I.
That's right, that's right. So we wanted to... So we glad to see Mrs. Fournier out with us tonight, okay? Now, we were here, the individual's request to appear before the board, Mr. Jeffrey Jones.
Good morning, or afternoon, board members. It's disappointing to have to come before this board, and it's somewhat embarrassing to watch the number of kids get accolades and have my three kids that I'm currently trying to educate. And what's so disappointing with it, let me explain to you who I am. Currently, I serve as the Third Vice President for the Alabama State Conference. I'm about to start my second year of law school. On October 17th, I received a letter from the principal banning me from the school. My daughter asked me on a regular basis, Daddy, why can't you come to the school? I served as the PTO president. Across the street at Pollard Park, I set up my Republican campaign headquarters in that park to run against Sam Jones in 2000. I worked very hard in this community, and to receive the constant communications of threats when individuals decided they wanted to contact and get involved, how my children can be taken away from me, and how I can't work in the community anymore unless I apologize, apologize for something I didn't do. I called the school system and asked for a copy of the recorded event. Nobody had the copy of that. My children witnessed the entire matter. Come here, Ramona. My daughter was handed the letter, cried for days. Say hello. Say, how you doing?
Hello.
And then to speak to you, Dr. Crenshaw, and you tell me I need to let my wife handle this. In fact, I was standing in Washington, DC, at the U.S. Capitol that had a reserve for Dr. Barber, Senator... Barber, Senator Hank Sanders, because I'm the logistics coordinator for SOS. And I'd organized a caravan from Selma to Washington DC covering all southern states, only to be told by my wife, you need to come home and deal with your children. You need to see what they're doing to your children. And I came in, Dr. Crenshaw, and I spoke to you, Ms. Peak, and I told you, you had the most segregated, discriminating, educating, sophisticated system for our advanced children I have ever seen. And I mean that. You had tests for Mexicans, tests for Hispanics, and tests for white kids. And you still maintain that principle. And I still maintain that allegation. And I file complaints to the Office of Civil Rights in that capacity. Last month, when I came, and this gentleman here, Dr. Foster, handed you that paper that I signed in late, and I came, I wanted to address you then, because the 180-day period was running when, for me to file the complaint on being banned from the school. I moved forward as a result of not being able to address you then. Now I ask you, would you please look into the matter and give me a response from this board as to why? Because all I've been told is based on my conduct, I've been, I would be guilty of trespass if I appear on Grant's Elementary's campus. For seven years, I've tried to start a PTA, drove my own car to Montgomery, tried to get parental involvement. For seven years, I've walked my three children and had breakfast with them, starting out with Jeffrey, who won the spelling bee at the school. He's, he has yet to receive a certificate, a notification of any, any recognition at all for winning the spelling bee of the school. Yes, I filed complaints. Yes, I've come out at this school. I even called a press conference when Chess Tang was, when they were talking about removing the kids to, away from the new school that's being built. I do, that's what I do. But I keep it local. I come to you, and I try to talk to one of you when I have a problem or when there's a concern. And I try to address it through this board. But I love my babies. When you tell me, you cross, my wife and I made these children through love. We worked very hard. I have to chase the van around to get them off just to take them to a love program after school. But I challenge any father to work as hard as I do to care and raise and educate my four children. They all make straight A's. And for me to receive a letter of that caliber challenging my moral character is an insult to the work I've spent in this community, working for the betterment of all children. Because the lady had just, I volunteer around the lunchroom with little children that are homeless and helpless and struggling. I talk to them. But to tell me as a man that I can't care for my children is an insult. And if you do that to me, no wonder we have no parental representation in the black community where we can line our parents up like these people are doing from the south part of the county. You need to step up, brother. You need to change. Because I know what happened to you on Highway 45. I'm a real man. Thank you all for letting me speak.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. That's all that's on the agenda here. We're now, Ms. Peak, proceed with the action items.
We presented all of the items during the work session. There are two additional items that were added. G-36, the sale of the College Park vacant property for $85,000. That's G-36.
Ms. Peak, I have it as 37, is that correct?
That's right.
We got a 37 also.
Now it's 37, yeah, 37.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Thank you. And G-38 is the sale of the old CLC school property on Spring Hill Avenue. Other than that, the agenda is as it's presented. The G-1, the state auditor presented the audit report. In that audit report, you will note that out of a $750 million budget, it was without any audit notation for the system, and we want to congratulate the business division on all of the work on that. But we'd ask in G-1 that you approve the results from the most recent audit of the Mobile County Public School System.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Dr. Foster.
In that, we have gone through these, many of these at a work session, the most recent work session. I move approval of items one through 19.
Okay, get a second.
Second.
Move approval that we, motion of second, have approved items one through 19. Any unreadness? All in favor by sign of aye?
Aye.
Pose the motion, care.
Action item G-20, we'd ask that you approve an agreement to accept $2,000 to assist the track team at Baker High School to meet the cost of traveling to the state tournament from the Mobile County Commission.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Stringfellow.
I move for approval, action items G-20 through 36.
Okay. I move proper second that we approve items 20 through 36. Any unreadness? All in favor by sign of aye?
Aye.
Pose the motion, care.
Action item G-37, ask that you approve the sale of the College Park vacant property near the University of Mobile for $85,000.
What's pleasure of the board?
Make a motion for 37 on 38.
Okay, 37, 38. Get a second.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to amend that if I could. Could we take those separately?
Sure, absolutely. I'm sorry. I amend that G-37.
Get a second, the second remain on the first motion.
Second.
Okay. Any unreadness? All in favor by sign of aye?
Aye.
Poses?
No.
Let the record show that one, no vote. Item 38.
Action item G-38, it asks that you approve the sale of the old CLC property on Spring Hill Avenue for $87,000.
This pleasure of the board?
Make a motion for approval.
Get a second.
Second.
Move proper second that we approve that, that particular item. Any unreadness?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. I have a question about that one.
Okay.
The, it seems that I've read in here somewhere that the, that the Veterans Recovery Services for war veterans is the group that's the purchaser on that for Veterans Recovery. Is that correct, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, that's what I understand, yes.
Okay.
Nonprofit for veterans.
Right, it's Veterans Recovery Services, okay.
I would, I have another.
Mr. Stringfellow.
Discussion, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Sheffield, Mr. Heiser, you here for Mr. Sheffield tonight? It's Mr. Sheffield here?
No, I just saw Mr. Sheffield.
Okay, or Mr. Holder. It was, it's my understanding that the building is in poor shape. I wouldn't use the word dilapidated because I hadn't been there in a long time. Is that correct, Mr. Holder?
You could say that the building is dilapidated. Entire roof has caved in on that building, and we receive regular citations.
And we're responsible for that.
We receive regular citations for any.
And my second question is, if we don't sell that property and we receive notice that it has to be removed, what would be the cost in doing that? Do you have any idea?
We haven't gotten an estimate on that, but we certainly can. We can get an estimate and bring it back to you.
Okay, well, I don't, certainly don't want to hold up the vote, but.
I think that's close to the, that's close to that amount, if I remember right.
So in other words, selling, tearing it, if we receive notice that we have to tear it down, may cost us more money than it is to sell it. Is that correct? And the veterans' organization is making us a fair appraisal value for the property, is that correct?
This is what the property was appraised for, for $87,000, and they've offered to purchase it for that price.
Thank you, Ms. Superintendent.
Any further comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, too, the, so that, this is, you know, the reason this is back on the agenda is that in the sale of property, it requires a 5-0 vote for the sale of school property, school system property. And that's, failed the last time to get a 5-0 vote, and that's the reason it's back on there this time.
Okay. Any further comments? Okay, I think we have a motion and a second. We're ready for vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Poses?
No.
Okay, all right. Next item, Ms. Peak.
Ask that you approve the certified resignations in G-39 listed under separate cover.
Let's play, yes, Mr. Harwell.
Make a motion for 39 through 48.
All right. Got a motion and got a second?
A second.
Moving proper second that we approve item 39 through 48. Any unreadness? All in favor by sign of aye?
Aye.
Poses, motion, care.
On action item, the consent agenda H, you had asked for additional information on out-of-county travel, and I have that information that explains some of the variances in the cost. Those amounted to different costs on hotel rooms and travel arrangements that were made. That gives you the information on those, those items. You'll see it notated under the item that's listed.
And Mr. Chairman, I'd like to thank Ms. Peak and also Councilman Harwell for requesting that, because that certainly explains it in a written format now that we know what that is.
And we'll continue to do that and make those notes on these for you to explain why there's variances. You'll note on there sometime people share rooms or they travel in different ways. So we'll, I think that's a good addition to the travel to explain it. But in, we present consent agenda items, one, out-of-county travel, and two, various bids.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Har, Mr. Stringfellow.
Yes, sir. A move for approval, consent agenda items H1 and 2.
We got a second.
Second.
Move proper second, we approve the consent agenda, agenda, any unreadness? All in favor by sign of aye?
Aye.
Pose the motion, care.
Action item I and student expulsions. We ask that you approve student expulsions one through 20 with the information provided under separate cover.
Make a motion for approval.
Get a second. I mean, this is probably the largest list, Mr. Mixon's not here, that we've had a long time.
He's not here. It is one of the larger lists we've had. It's a culmination of several months of that, getting people to come in for the hearings and then presenting them to you for approval.
And I did notice, Ms. Superintendent, that in reading each one of these, that quite a few of them, the school system has made many opportunities to try to contact the parents about it, which makes me feel sad that we don't have some representative for that.
Okay, Ms. Peak.
We'd ask that you approve action item one through 20 on student expulsions.
A second then. Now, I think Mr. Harwell.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Did you make the motion, Mr. Harwell? Okay, I second that.
Got a motion and a second that we approve the student expulsions. Any unreadness? All in favor by sign of aye?
Aye.
Pose the motion, care.
In the items J for information, we present the monthly financial statements, purchase orders of $5,000 and over, and rezoning in J3 as information, just a small change in Howard, Linecough, and Spencer West Lawn due to overcrowding. So we present that to you for information. That concludes the items that we're presenting tonight on this agenda.
Okay. We have an item for discussion. Any old business? Any board superintendent requests? Are there pending matters? Attorney-client privileges?
Sent an email to the board yesterday regarding three proposed pension agreements.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval on the attorney's recommendation from the superintendent on those items.
Second.
I move proper second that we approve the items forward to us from the board's attorney. Any unreadness? All in favor by sign of aye?
Aye.
Pose the motion, care. Ms. Peak, under that rezoning, under the attachment, it says contacts Martha L. Peel and Terrence S. Mixon.
It's always good to have your name changed when you're changing school zones. We'll correct that.
Let the record reflect it should be Martha P.
Please, we will correct that and put Martha P.
Okay, all right. We have a meeting scheduled, I want to.
I would like to ask the board if you would consider coming in on Monday, June the 5th, for a special call meeting. I know you generally like to come in at noon on those days for personnel items.
Which day again?
Monday, June the 5th.
Ms. Abels, you would notify each board member? Okay, is that conflict with anybody?
It looks good to me.
At noon, that's generally when you like to.
Yes.
To come in.
I will, just call me. It looks good to me, Mr. Chairman.
Monday, June the 5th, okay. Thank you. I appreciate it. We'll be getting those, that information in items two.
Okay. Mr. Stringfellow, you have anything?
No, sir.
Dr. Foster.
Just to comment, I, I don't see that there's a problem in using multiple names if you're the superintendent of a very large system like this. Several aliases might help, you know.
You do have a Twitter name.
I do.
Okay. I agree with, I agree with Dr. Foster.
Let me just go on record as saying, I answer to all names that are nice.
Were you attempting to go incognito here or something, or?
It could have been. I'm not sure what, what was happening when that was entered.
I'm glad Dr. Crenshaw called that.
You know, we have a board member that has an alias too. His name is John Spratling.
Yeah, that's true.
Every time his phone number comes up on the phone, it's John Spratling. So that would be Dr. Foster.
Interesting.
Okay. Mr. Battles.
No, no, no.
Mr. Harwell.
No, sir.
Now that we've had all these interesting comments and change of names, we entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Get a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion.